Welcome, everyone and all to the regularly scheduled city council meeting. Pretty small turnout here. Are we okay?
I'm trying to get it to go. There we go.
Go ahead.
Public hearing's gonna be short.
Yeah. Okay, as soon as we have the red light, then we'll officially call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM. And we'll now proceed with our round call.
Okay. Andy Wilson?
He's, I was informed earlier that he's not likely to be here tonight because of the physical malady that he's dealing with.
So we consider him excused?
Yes.
Okay. Mark Fenison?
Present.
Joe Schei?
Present.
Kevin Flynn?
Present.
Justin Olson?
Cousin.
And Mayor Smith?
Here. So, we do have a quorum. We'll proceed happily. And would do so by, as is customary, beginning with an invocation. And tonight's individual who volunteered is our distinguished council representative, Mr. Olson.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we just come before you, guys. Just thank you for this land, God. And, Lord, we just pray for the leadership of this land, God. We just pray for the city, Lord. Just the issues that we bring up tonight, God, Lord, just help us to make a wise counsel with those decisions, Lord. And, Lord, we just pray for protection, God, for the people and for the children of this community, Lord. And just bless this evening and bless this council in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you very much. Let's all now please rise before the pledge of allegiance. And Mr. Fenison, do you think it's...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Well, with that, we'll dive into the mayor's report. I would first remind all present that we still have a first aid class scheduled for March 28. I think we have only two people signed up for it, but it will be what it is. And those who participate will be the better for it. Let's see. I did also, I didn't enumerate it on the public agenda, however. I can report to the council that another historic event occurred this morning, I believe. We were able to transport our first wild dog roaming the streets of Vader. And one of our astute and helpful residents was able to corral the dog and put it on the leash. And we acquired a portable dog pen and transported the dog to the main society. So, that's a giant step forward. We're now the proud owners of a new kennel, and we'll use it for that purpose.
And one less dog.
That's right. So, that's an historic moment. I'd like to also call your attention to the clean city hall that was pressure washed. It was a two-day affair. We rented a pressure washer and also cleaned inside the pavilion that was sorely needed. So, I hope, then, as you depart, that you will stand in gaze and awe at the freshly faced building. So, we thank our public works employee for that. I also wanted to inform the council that for the past three days, we've been dealing with something of a crisis involving a backed-up sewer line. But in my eight years in this position, was the first time that the situation actually was, as the homeowner thought, on city property. And we encouraged them to get a rotor ruder person out, and they ran their snake in it and did confirm that it was on our, within city limits. So, we've had to conscript the services of a contractor off of our small works roster. And if you'd like to watch, yet we've now had them do, PUD came out to test for underground wires and such. And so, we have approval now to proceed. But it's on the corner of Eighth and D up here. The new family, the Hanson family's moved in. But I've been over there and have watched and talked to them. I've talked to the rotor ruder people or the company that's actually doing the repairs. We don't know how much it's gonna cost, but it's gonna take some excavating and...
That's right where they did a manhole.
No, it's about forty to fifty feet east of the manhole.
They say what caused it?
They don't know yet.
They don't know yet.
Oh.
But I can report that the drainage system, the gutters on the house were connected directly into their sewer line. So, all the rainwater that washed off the roof for the past who-knows-how-many years had been going into our sewer system. So, we've solved that problem. Yet another house is...
There's an INI problem.
And they are going to apply for the next round of INI input. But that isn't what apparently has caused this problem. So, be aware that you're going to see an expense that was unanticipated as we strive to repair it. And let's hope that it doesn't exceed too much.
That will come out of the sewer budget, correct?
Yes, I was correct. So, that's for information purposes. That's all I have in my report. So, with that, let's proceed with the official approval of the agenda for tonight. I do need to make one mayoral recommendation for insertion. Let's see. We need, we need to insert a conversation about the rate study and approve an application for some grant funding that our city clerk will share with you. So, I'd like to put that under four B wastewater topics.
Actually, it's five B if you look on your...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
A rate study?
Yeah.
Yes, it'd be a rate study.
What about the D?
B five? No, B five, B three I.
Okay.
Five B, three I.
Yeah.
Okay. So, if you could add that when you make the motion to approve.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for a meeting for March 26, 2015, with the addition of the rate study, with the status of land acquisitions under B triple A.
Okay. All right. You've heard the motion to approve the agenda. With that addition, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Fenison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. Now, let's proceed with the approval of our last city council minutes. We'll wait for council action.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written for March 12, 2015?
Okay. Heard that motion to approve the minutes articulated. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Flynn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the end of March of $6,440.47, for the first half of March total of $20,214.63, and for March 2015 total of $26,655.10.
Okay. Mr. Flynn has submitted a motion for your consideration, and the amount so stipulated. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Olson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public comment?
I do not see anyone on public comment.
Okay, very good. Well, it's now, we'll proceed then with our official agenda, beginning with item one, which is public hearing. And in order to accomplish that, I would adjourn our official city council meeting and then call to order at 6:11 PM a public hearing in which we will invite comments from the public on the shoreline management program update, which I know has been a long, ongoing project involving Grant Osborne and their very competent engineer, John Hinton, who served the city well over the years.
Thank you, Mayor.
And so, would you like to provide some commentary?
You might, let me give some background.
I should. Mr. Hinton also mentioned that the council should probably, if you'd like, establish a length of time for the public hearing. And you could make it dependent upon the numbers of individuals who would like to make comment for your application. So, you could indicate...
I would say, I would say twenty minutes. We should be able to do it.
If it's shorter, it could be...
Yeah. Well, let's say not to exceed twenty minutes.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Okay. We got C nod's affirmation. Okay. And we'll proceed with that. Time to straighten.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. My name's John Hinton, Grant Osborne Engineers. And what I've tried to do with this one-page handout is consolidate about a twenty-two-page ecology summary sheet into one page that hopefully we can go through quickly. The first five items are kind of chronology of what we've been doing for the past three-plus years. Basically, in late 2011, Ecology gave grant money to all the cities and counties to update their shoreline master program and their development regulations. So, in 2012, the city hired Grant Osborne to help them with that task. They could've went with the county, but I think the council's desire was if they hired somebody independent, there would be a little bit more time spent in town to go over the specific issues that Vader has with their shore. So, we went through the Ecology, basically their contract requirements, which, you know, public participation, shoreline inventory, cumulative impact analysis, a number of different documents that they needed to get through this process. And basically, we formed after the first public hearing back in May of 2014, actually, it was the second public hearing. We just, we created a citizens advisory group that were people that lived along the Olaqua. So, we held four meetings after that, public meetings with that, that citizens advisory group, kind of going over all the issues that Ecology required, and, you know, questions were asked. And then we talked to Ecology and basically boiled it down to where we came up initially with, with a shoreline inventory and characterization report, which basically went through and looked at the environment along Olaqua Creek, which is state waters, and determined, you know, how much of that environment had been impacted, where were the sensitive areas, and basically defined the shoreline area that was contributing to the Vader municipal area as far as the, what was outlined in Ecology's guidelines and state law. So, the yellow shows that area that is defined. And it's, it runs really true to what Vader had already adopted in their development regulations, about 200 feet from the mean high water mark. And so, once we went through and got that report through Ecology, got them to buy off on this area, we then proceeded with coming up with a shoreline master program update, which is really the document that details how you go through permitting processes to build stuff in the shoreline area. The updated map, actually, we added high-intensity development on either side, a little piece on either side of the highway going through town here, to give us a little bit more flexibility there. But everything else is, is basically the urban conservancy environment. And basically, what that means is if you're going to build new, new development in these areas, you need to go through a permitting process. Depending on what you're building, how much impact it might have to the environment, it's gonna first be looked at by the Vader Development Committee. And then if they feel it should have further review, it's going to go to Ecology to have them double-check what, what's being proposed as mitigation, what's being proposed as, as, you know, what they're doing to minimize the impact to, to the environment. The, the way the, the rule came down is once we pass this and adopt this, we keep track of what happens beyond this point. Now, buildings that are there now are not tearing anything down. In fact, there's, there's rules in here for non-conforming structures. They can build higher or behind their house. But if their, if their house is, is in the shoreline and they want to build something closer to the creek, then they need to go through the permit process. The, the real goal is what the, what the state calls no net loss. And what that means is, starting from the adoption of this document, we want to maintain this shoreline environment area so that we don't lose any more environmental, we don't lose any more big trees that are shading the water for, for salmon, you know, and so forth. So, if we do have a development, they really need to mitigate in areas that have been disturbed and maybe do some replanting of some fir trees or conifers and get to the point where whatever we develop in here, there's no net loss from the time we adopt this document. I'll just go through real quick the bullet points at the bottom of, of this page. Once this is adopted, it develops regulations for proposed development in shoreline areas and provides a permitting process for proposed development in those areas. It allows permit variances for proposed development, meeting certain variance criteria. It allows permanent exemptions for minor improvements under $5,700 in those areas that don't interfere with normal public use of water or shoreline. It allows for certain improvements of non-conforming structures, which I touched on briefly. Identifies uses and activities that are permitted, conditionally permitted, and prohibited in shoreline areas. You know, we're gonna prohibit mining, and we're gonna prohibit forest practices in that shoreline area, that type of thing. So, and it also identifies heights restrictions, setback requirements, maximum impervious surface, those types of things allow in the shoreline area. So, really, it, it brings us into, in concert with state law that was adopted back in 2004 and 2008. And when, when we adopt this, the state have one more look at it in the next thirty to sixty days. And then, once they adopt it, they become a partner with you now. If, if you go through the permit process and somebody wants to take you to court for what you're asking them to do, the state steps up and says, hey, this was adopted through the state process, and it was done properly. There's no, no attempt to take land away from people. It's just trying to be good stewards of this area and make sure that what does develop in there is done in a reasonable manner with, with a view to the environmental nature of that shoreline. So, with that, I'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
Would this eliminate any agricultural developments along the shoreline area?
There's gonna be boundaries where they're not gonna want agriculture real close to that shoreline because of the nitrate issues.
Right.
Agriculture is permitted, permitted use, but it may require a substantial development permit or statement of exemption approval. So, we're gonna wanna look at where their fences are, how close, you know, if there's cattle or something, we wanna keep them away from the shoreline. So, it'll be evaluated and determine, you know, what's the best place to put that fence. But it is permitted use.
Okay.
There was testing done, I remember when I read, read through this a couple weeks ago, at, at the bridge, right there at the Highway 506 intersection with, with, with the bridge over the Olaqua. And they said that there were some of the highest pesticide readings in the state recorded at that, at that location. Was there any, any reasons why? I know there's a nursery up, up the creek just a little ways. But...
That was our best guess and the state's best guess is tree farms upstream. But, you know, I'm telling you, spending a bunch of money and do a hard look at everything, it's really tough to point a finger at any one thing.
Okay. So, because the, the creek is the city limit line on the west side of the city, so we have just the 200 feet that's east of the creek, pretty much.
Counties have the other...
So, the county has the other side. So, if there's an issue going on on the other side of that, the county would be the one that would handle that.
That's right.
That comes under the same shoreline management program though, doesn't it?
Yeah. They're not quite done with theirs yet. They're a little behind schedule. But there's, theirs will be pretty similar to ours. They've, they've gotten copies of ours and reviewed it. And they may have some different requirements than we do. I haven't seen their file yet to really see what the differences are. They've got a little more to look at than we do.
There were recommendations in there for nature paths from roughly from the, from the highway bridge all the way down past the sewer treatment facility. What, would there be any assistance for getting grant funding for something like that? Or where, where does your involvement with this, with this, with these recommendations end?
There are, in the restoration plan, there were some, some items that were, were put in there as these are likely areas to do mitigation or to do public access. And I think we listed some different groups that you could talk to to see if there's, if there's some, some funding or some help available. It's really year by year, depending on what, what the legislature decides to throw money at, whether it's roads this year and sewer systems next year. But at this point, it's probably not real high on their priorities for funding. But there certainly are the watershed groups and different, different groups that are, are looking at shorelines that may have money available or volunteers for both. But really, the, the restoration plan was a requirement, and it was really something that Ecology wanted us to put together for you guys to kind of give you a roadmap. If, you know, if you need to mitigate or if you want to have better access, these are, you know, good places to look at to do something like that. And if, you know, obviously, if you do upgrade to the sewer treatment plant, you know, that, maybe there's an area there that you could gain access to the creek and, and maybe connect up with the city park over on that 12th or the...
Yeah.
The undeveloped park.
Park road.
Yeah. But not, I have not seen too much grant funding for this type of stuff right now. But we'll keep, we'll keep our, our ears open and maybe coffee or something.
Well, it was a very impressive report that took into account three or four different creek systems, all the way from Malakamas all the way to the creek to the, to the west of Olaqua, and with all the different soil contents and mineral compositions. It was really pretty neat.
Ecology helped a lot. It was really a team effort. I took my hat to Chrissy Bailey at Ecology. She really steered me in a different direction than sometimes when I was going and really helped out a lot. I'm just a dumb dirt engineer, so it was good to have some expertise and some hydrogeologists at Ecology that I could bounce stuff off of. But thank you. It was, it was very interesting to put it together. It was time-consuming.
Imagine.
Okay. Well, we're now, I think, sixteen minutes in. So, we theoretically have four minutes. So, do we have any comments from any member of the public?
You can still comment.
You can still comment.
You have four minutes. What do you wanna say?
Think of something.
No, we're done.
Okay. Then, hearing no additional commentary. And if the council does not oppose this action, I will adjourn or call this public hearing to a close at 6:27 PM. And I will re-gavel to, or recall to order our city council meeting and officially return to our agenda, which would be item two, council consideration of resolution 07-2015 regarding hearing examiner contract. And pleased to report that we did learn today that our planner reviewed the contract and did not find any areas that he felt needed to be modified or changed. So, we're ready to consider action on that. Which action would represent yet another historic?
You're looking at your old agenda, and I just realized you, you went out of order. It's actually number three, but that's okay.
Oh, for heaven's sake. Okay. Yeah. See, I was, an hour ago was dealing with that. Okay. But nothing I've said changes. We'll just consider it under item three. So, it could very well be a historic moment if the council chooses to approve this resolution.
I'll make a motion. There's no further pre-motion comments. All right. I move to approve resolution 07-2015 offering the mayor to execute the professional services agreement for hearings examiner with Mano McCritcher and, how do you say that?
Parrot Towed.
Parrot Towed, substantially in the form attached to the resolution.
Okay. Heard that motion to approve the ordinance as noted. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Olson. Now is an opportunity for the council to provide additional commentary, address questions, concerns about that motion. Hearing and seeing none, I would put the matter to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay. Well, then, commend the council. We will now proceed with...
We should take some time out and stand up and cheer for that one.
Yes, there is. Somewhere, if not in our heads. And therefore, we will set a motion to consummation of this contract. And then, the city, there will be nothing really standing in our way of actually implementing some of our ordinances.
It's exciting.
It is. Quite exciting. So, let's watch and wait what unfolds. Now, we will proceed now by jumping backwards in time to item two. Council consideration of ordinance Council consideration of ordinance 2015-03, which relates to a 2015 budget amendment. And hopefully you have a chance to.
I'll put a motion on the table, move to adopt the ordinance 2015-03, amending 2015 Vader City Budget by increasing the revenues and expenditures of the current funding amount of $10,000, and directing the city clerk treasurer to effect the budget as directed.
Okay, and, okay, heard the motion to approve that resolution as articulated. We have a second.
A second.
Second by Mr. Penison. Additional inquiry, commentary, concerns?
One thing I'd like to discuss on that, even though I put the motion up, I, the, I wasn't totally clear, because they brought, they brought an article, a portion up saying that the, wasn't sure what the fees would be for the hearings, and that there'd be a charge to the people having, having a hearing, so that would pretty much offset the cost of the examiner. But we haven't really come up with a fee schedule yet.
That is correct, yeah. We felt it was appropriate to pass this ordinance so that we could demonstrate that we were aware that there would be an impact on our budget, because it would be awkward, at the very least, if we had approved a hearing examiner without making a change to our budget. And since whatever the fees are, it will offset the expenses. I think council can have some time now to establish those fees.
I just wanted to get that out in the open, because we discussed it a long time ago, and it wasn't brought up here.
So we'll make note of that on the public record.
That fee schedule, we're working on that, it's in process, and we're trying to get it down to, to where we can present it to you.
Well, now that we have an idea of how much a hearing examiner is going to cost, we should be able to base our fees on it appropriately. It'll all work out good, just, just fine.
Okay, great. Now we will jump down to item.
We've got to vote on that.
You need to vote.
It's not a done deal yet, man.
We've got to vote on it.
You didn't vote yet.
So eager to move forward. Trying to beat ours, well, that's too late.
You have a few squeeze in a public hearing.
Yeah, that's true, we'll subtract that. Okay, so have additional comments? Oh, okay, we just need to vote. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Now we'll jump to the fourth. Council to discuss employee salary schedule, plan of action. Leaving our last council meeting, we indicated that we would provide to you, or give you something that you could ruminate on, and hopefully you've done that, and you have it. We're not, I don't think calling for necessarily action tonight.
Well, what we need to do is, council needs to decide how they want to implement the rate schedule, what type of rate schedule, what, they need to decide what the policy is going to say. And so the question at this point is, I've kind of done as much as I can do to provide you with information until I know more, what direction you're going. I can continue to gather more information once we kind of have an idea where, where you're headed and how you want to do it, and I can start creating some things to, to present to you. But council kind of needs to, to take a step here, and so whether you feel like you're ready to do that at this point, or whether you'd like to get together and have a workshop, or whatever you want to do to, to handle that, that's kind of what we're looking for is a plan of action so that we know, okay, where are we going, what are we going to do next?
I have questions for the mayor, since he has so much experience in this over the last several years and how he's handled it. I have, I have questions I would like to ask him, and it could get lengthy, and so workshop sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, workshop.
Okay, I see a general consensus to that idea across the board. We want to try and select a date.
Sure. What's your calendar like?
Well, well, it's not pretty, that's for sure.
That's why I'm asking you.
It's ugly, but could we try before our next council meeting, just immediately before? Maybe?
Does that allow, Justin, does he, you get home early enough?
I could, yeah, I could, what, what time?
Well, if we started at six, five thirty, five forty, I think.
Five thirty, I could do that.
Yeah, well, that would probably be ideal for me.
I'll have to check my retirement schedule and see where I am.
And what date would that be again?
That would be April, oh, I took the calendar down.
One behind you.
April 9th? Yeah, I think that's right. Yeah, I think the 2nd is the first Thursday.
Yeah, well, unfortunately, I will not be available on that date. Even for the city council meeting.
Well, then I'll be the mayor that time, so then I'll handle the meeting, and you're out.
I have questions for him, though, not for you.
Oh, that's great.
I know it.
He's got to be there.
Well, I, I'm sorry, throwing this all out right now, but if the mayor is going to be gone on the 9th, and I'm going to be gone seven days before that, so I'll be back on Wednesday before the council meeting, be trying to get everything together for council meeting one day before. I'm wondering if council would consider.
That's spring break, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, either postponing that meeting or rescheduling it for another time. I mean, you have the option to just skip it and do the, do the next meeting if you want, or if you want to reschedule it.
That's an idea.
What do we have, what do we have pending? Things that have to be done? We don't have anything on the, we're pretty much got everything set, don't we?
I think probably this. This, the salary.
That's the only, that's the only issue we have.
There's no really running deadline.
Right, that's what I'm getting at. We don't have any issues that are pressing. Why don't we, because that's, there's a lot of people with kids that, you know, that's spring break, everybody's going to be gone. Maybe we ought to just skip that meeting and move on to the next, give everybody a break.
We called spring break.
There it is.
Council could have a spring break.
That might affect our wages.
It's about to cut it in half.
So then would you consider having the workshop before the 23rd, the meeting on the 23rd?
Five thirty?
Is that, because that would be the next meeting date? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I'm going to presume that I would be.
Yeah, is that the, is that the third Thursday? I'm sorry, I don't have my calendar.
We could do it that night, we could even have the workshop anytime between then and now, if there was a free spot. So the 9th is, so you have the 9th or the 23rd?
Well, the 9th, we'll just skip it.
Yeah, we're going to skip that.
And then we'll just go to the 23rd.
Yeah. I'd say we do that.
Does that work out for you?
Yeah.
Super.
But in the meantime, you're always welcome to talk to the mayor anytime about questions.
Sure, that was my intention this week, but things came up.
Okay.
So we, we should probably have a motion that is canceling that meeting.
Definitely.
I'll put a motion on the floor that we cancel our meeting for the 9th due to the spring schedules, and have all the meetings and agenda moved to the 23rd of the month, the next meeting.
You've heard the motion, I hope, to cancel our next official city council meeting and hold our next official meeting on the 23rd, and then hold at 5:30 PM a workshop involving budget or payday issues. So do we have a second on this?
I'll second that.
Okay, second by Mr. Olson. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, now we'll jump down to item five. 5A is a status report on the land acquisition process. I'm pleased to report to the council, if you haven't heard, that it became, we became aware of the possibility that the city might be able to legally proceed with the acquisition of the property that the Assembly of God Church here in town has made available to the city to acquire. But we had been waiting for an amendment to the capital facility plan, inserting that as a potential part property. Well, we learned that there is a possibility that we can acquire that land without designating it as part property. And so we, since our last meeting, have heard the matter over for deliberation with our city attorney, Carol Morse, and she's just informed us that as she reviews the matter, she is in agreement that it is possible. And so we just learned that, and so there's no action that the council can take at the moment, but there's a lot of hoops that need to be dealt with when it comes to land purchase. And so if the council, I don't know that there needs to be any formal official action on the part of the council, but be aware that probably at our next meeting, we'll set in motion those processes. If that makes sense. So that's the report. Now, Angel, did you have anything to add or clarify?
No, just to be aware that the process, as usual, is a lot more complicated than you might think, and because there's city and it's city funds, that we have to go through, jump through a lot of different hoops, including different testing on the soil and things like that to make sure there's no hazardous materials. A lot of things I'm learning, so I'll keep you informed as we know, but there will be some additional cost for some testing, things like that, and some whatever is required.
Good title, and research.
That's just to make sure we don't get ourselves a waste dump.
Yep.
Well, you know, all those churches storing the hazardous waste on.
That's right.
Property next to a park.
You never know what you buy, so.
Well, it's just not an archaeological burial site.
I know, it's another one. Not until we did, we don't have to worry about that until we did.
Okay, well, then, now we'll proceed to item 4BII. 5BII, and that's the status of the process to find a location for the outfall with our waste treatment facility. And I can report that we've had some interaction with VHC, and there's, and we've had a teleconference with, with the Department of Commerce, Washington State Department of Commerce, on the matter and other related issues, and we're making progress. But we haven't gotten any definitive progress that is, I think that we could report for the council. But anticipate by our next council meeting, we should have some definitive steps that we could articulate for the public record, if that makes sense.
What are they currently doing? What are their actions right now?
They're trying to determine if there may be, what the feasibility would be of going along 506, or pursuing a southerly route. And there's property owners and the southerly route that we're still waiting to get feedback from.
So they're still in feedback gathering from, from property owners at this moment?
Yeah. So, don't want to be excessively obtuse, but I tried to reach out an hour ago and wasn't able to get through to see if I myself could discern some progress to report, but I didn't get any feedback. So there you have it. So I would proceed to 5BII, the status of the private site sewer replacement. I can report that the company did come back, and they did reseed several of the work sites that had been completed earlier. And we've had at least one resident, and probably two, if we asked, if they're satisfied with it, who indicated that they're not satisfied with the results. And so we're going to pursue that and ensure that they come back and make them, to, they restore it to a condition satisfactory to the resident. But beyond that, where they're at, so now we're waiting until round two of it. And hopefully, we can entice other residents to participate in. So that's my report there. Now we'll add 5B3IIII, which was added to our agenda. So.
Want me to go ahead and hand out the packet of information?
Yeah, let's go ahead and start there.
So I got a call from Kathy Reed at the Department of Commerce a few weeks ago, and she said that this group, they're called Rural Community Assistance Corporation, has received money from the Department of Ecology to help cities, small cities especially, to do a weight, a rate study for the utilities. And I thought, since I didn't get this early enough to be able to put it in your packet, I thought I would just read to you real quick what this letter explains, and the city council is interested in moving forward with it. She says, "Industry best practices recommend revisiting sewer rates on an annual basis when creating the budget and working with a third party to conduct a rate study every five to 10 years." So that's what she's proposing here. Kathy Reed mentioned the possible interest in a sewer rate study to Washington Department of Ecology, who contacted RCAC. The study process was discussed with staff who expressed interest. RCAC is available to conduct the study at no cost to the city of Vader, thanks to technical assistance funding from the Washington Department of Ecology. To complete a meaningful rate study, your and/or others' time, information, and input will be required, and she's talking to you as council members in this letter. RCAC requests the council make a motion to commit to the rate study and the employee time and resources the rate study will require for data collection, study review, and meetings. To ensure the study meets the community's goals, RCAC requests the council designate a group to work with RCAC and attend one to three meetings, review the data and findings, and provide input on draft study recommendations. This group might be composed of the entire council, the public works committee, or created as an ad hoc committee, or citizen advisory team. A CAT citizen advisory team might include council members, staff, utility rate payers, business owners, residential representatives, et cetera, and/or external service providers. Time commitment would include one to three work sessions, estimated at two hours in length, I think, review of data meeting preparation, estimated at one to three hours for each meeting, and review final recommendations, estimated at one hour. Meetings would be scheduled based on availability of the group. So, one thing to note is that this money runs out at the end of June, so that means we have to get the study done by the end of June. Normally, the study would take longer than that, but they are kind of doubling up their schedule so that they can try to get us in, so we can take advantage of the spending source. They don't know if they're going to have money after June. So she is, they have the money to do it, and they are willing to help us. So, she is, they have the money to do it and they are willing to help us, and basically, this rate study, what it will do for us is it will help the financial end of things, they're going to look at all of our data for our sewer system, as far as the flows, how much people use, what they've been paying, what our costs are, what our bills are, what are we looking at in the future as having for costs, like building our system and whatever, and they'll take all that data and they'll analyze it and see if our rates are where they need to be to handle that, and, and/or what it will look like in the future, so it'll kind of give us an outlook over the next several years of where the rates will most likely go in order to keep these utility systems solvent. So, not only is this going to benefit our sewer system and make sure that we are not charging too much or too little, and that we'll, we'll have some really very experienced people working on helping us set some rate ideas. The other thing is, this will be a good step in showing the Department of Health, the Department of Ecology, and other state and county groups that we are being responsible utility owners, so when we go back and, and request our water system back at some point, we will be able to put this on the list of things that we have been doing this as is expected, so every five to 10 years, we can say we did a rate study and along with other things. So, there's additional information here that will give you more information, and you don't have to commit to being on this committee or anything right now, she just wants to know if council can support us getting started on this.
What type of action do we have to put forth tonight?
To the motion.
Just to, yeah.
I would thank, I want to publicly thank our city clerk for delving into the complexities of this, and when I first heard, I was skeptical and not highly motivated, but when I was given the clarifying information you just heard, to me, it sounds wise, and if we have a decent prospect of getting the funding, I couldn't be foolish if we didn't, so.
I remember being at a meeting with the ecology, and one of the complaints they had about us is that we weren't being professional enough in the planning of our systems, so that, this would sort of give us that professional air, right?
And so, all you need to do tonight is authorize myself, working with our city clerk, to proceed forward with this potential grant.
So, this is a neutral party, a secondary study to information that, that we already have, or?
They'll be taking, they'll be gathering our information and analyzing it for us, they're.
So, they're at a board, like they say?
Yes, it looks like they're, they're main office.
So, they specialize with rural communities?
So, they just did Mossy Rock a couple of weeks ago, and so I called and talked to their.
Yeah, what was it?
City clerk and just, you know, kind of said, how did that go, what was it, and she said it was, it was really great, she was really impressed with the product, and they did the work, you know, she had to gather the information in the way that they needed it, but they even, the RCAC, she said, even went over and above and broke it all down, which is something that they sometimes ask the cities to do, but they understood her situation, that she didn't have time to do it, and so they went ahead and did that part for her as well, and so she was quite impressed with it. I guess Windlock and Naperville, I think, are getting theirs done, right, as we speak? I believe it's those two cities, I know those two cities are having it done, and so by the same people, and they're just kind of going around and helping these small communities with the funds that they've been given by Department of Ecology to do it, so.
The stuff we're facing with this increase in sewer costs, it sure would be nice to have an outside body to go through and give a study, not only give us cover, but it would protect us with the comments from ecology, you know, any recommendations they would make.
Gives a better concept, too.
These are people that are experienced in doing it, and I don't mean to make myself sound bad or anything, but I hadn't done this before, you know, I came here and I don't have a lot of experience in this, and so I really look forward to this information so that, you know, I can be confident that what I'm presenting to you is accurate information.
Well, I made a motion that we approve the mayor going forward on the sewer rate study request.
All right, you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Penison to authorize the mayor to proceed forward with this potential grant application. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Executed by Mr. Flynn. Concerns, last opportunity, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, we're now down to our last official item, five C, just a staff's report on the surplus police vehicle. I'd remind the council that we're made aware that we've gotten an offer to purchase that vehicle from the neighboring community, authorized to me to engage in. Yeah, and so.
How'd you do?
Well, it's still in process, but we did do some analysis of the vehicle and discerned that a reasonable price would have been in the $16,000 category, so we drafted a letter countering their offer, and we've invited them to consider a price between, I don't know if council wants it or doesn't have a public record.
Probably not.
Probably not, so, but it's significantly higher than $8,000 for the offer that we received.
Does the value go up because of, not because of the blue book value, it's been the equipment of the vehicle?
Yes, it's, yeah, the, it's got a HEMI, apparently, and that dramatically enhances the value of that vehicle, according to the blue book.
Got a what?
A HEMI.
Oh, yeah.
So, and plus, you know, being a law enforcement type vehicle, it has all of those bells and whistles, so we think it's a fair, and it's our responsibility as elected officials to ensure that the residents get fair value for merchandise that's surplus.
It pulls strong from 70 up, I, I tried it out once.
I was just going to say, another thing that, just so that council is aware, the other thing the mayor took into account when selecting a price range was being cooperative with another small community that has the same challenges and struggles that we do, and so in, in the letter that he sent off, it was, it was a fairer price than what they had offered, in our opinion, but also it wasn't the high, high price of what we might be able to get for it, so he was trying to be reasonable and cooperative and do a good job for the city at the same time, so.
Yeah, we're hoping to see if we can entice them a little bit, so, we'll wait and hold our breath to see. All right, then, if there are no further questions regarding that agenda item, there, we've exhausted the agenda as I see it, so I would officially declare this council meeting adjourned at 6:59 PM.